I'd like to call today's planning commission meeting to order. We have established harm. One of our members is absent today. There will be discussion on, I think, sign recommendations under communications. So people are planning to speak. There is a sign-in sheet that is available on the front table there. If you could please fill in your name and what other information it does request, we'd appreciate it. If you are going to speak during today's commission meeting, do ask that you allow me to administer an oath. Those that are planning on speaking, all you have to do is say "I do" after I administer this. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission?
I do.
I appreciate it. We have moved up our new exciting development in our agenda, the disposition of last meeting's minutes to first before we can proceed with the new material. It is attached, and I believe Charlene had emailed it out to everyone to review prior to. So are there any corrections or comments that need to be made to the minutes?
No. I read it, but I forgot what we -- if there was anything needed.
Well, this is a difficult one because there was a public hearing, so. Charlene always does a pretty good job at trying to understand what everyone -- the point everyone's trying to get across. Thank you, Char.
I was not present, so.
Okay, how do we accept the minutes?
I'll second that motion. Are those in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
All right. There's no further discussion on the minutes. We'll now move on to cases. We have none today. We'll get a report from the city planner and director of development and code enforcement to determine if there will be any upcoming cases. So we'll move on to communications. We have the signed task force recommendations. Once again, that we'll be reviewing. We have gone through this in pretty great detail over the past, you know, year really, we could say. And the signed recommendations have been put forward into the section, the changes that we were going to make into Title 23, 03, 13. All those changes have been pretty much put into place. I don't know if this has been disseminated on your website or anything yet, Paul? On the -- I can't remember if you posted this on your --
It should be on the website.
Okay.
Four or five months ago.
Okay. So it's still up, it's on?
I hope so. I don't recall specifically posting it, but I believe we posted it.
Well, it still may be buried. I'm sure your new material is eclipsing it. But what I understand, the mayor had met with you and John Paskeet to do another sort of internal review of the document. Do you want to bring forward those sort of corrections or comments now before?
We mostly just had -- and John, feel free to chime in if you want -- a few minor corrections that we had -- that we worked on. Most of them are typos, but I think John has all those written down. If you want to get into the detail of each typo, we can do that right now.
Well, yeah, let's go ahead. I mean, I think that's a pretty easy thing to just cover.
There's just a few things that we also missed through the review process. I think one of the bigger ones was on page 10. I apologize. I don't think your sheet is actually numbered.
They are numbered.
They are, okay.
As updated as.
If you look at the bottom of page 10, size of sign in square feet, that chart there.
This would be I, section I, I think, three I, is it?
Yes.
Five I.
Five I?
Three I, five.
Two I, five.
Page looks like this. If anyone can hear this.
Yeah, we don't have page numbers.
There's 15 pages total. Count off to page 10. The size of sign in square feet is missed. It doesn't really tell you much because what it says is if your sign is 15 feet or less, the maximum height allowed in feet is six. But if you go down to line number four, it says if your sign is 100 feet or less, your maximum height is 60. So there's some 40 feet, excuse me. So what that means though is if my sign is less than 100 feet, which might actually be less than 15 feet, you can interpret that as saying I can go up to 40 feet high. So what we think that should say is line number one should be 15 or less, line number two should be 15 to 25, line number three should be 25 to 50, and then line number four should be 50 to 100, just to clarify those height requirements.
Is the next one 40 or 60?
Maximum height stayed the same.
So is 100, does that imply that 100 is the maximum square footage? Or if you go above 100, it's still no more than 40?
Right now, 100 foot is the maximum square foot that you can do on anything anyway.
So that anything above 50 is really, or anything above 50 or more?
50 or greater, maximum height, 40 feet.
And if I remember, there is a section in code. Do you remember offhand what section it is? The max, the signage is actually required for lane width, I guess it is?
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I think it is.
Two lanes is 50 feet.
Yeah.
Three lanes or greater is 100.
Okay, so that's section E. No, I'm saying that's in.
Looks like it's the four in that under freestanding signs types permitted, or I guess it'd be number four, freestanding signs, maximum number and maximum area. It's on page nine, if your sheet is numbered.
Nice sheet, yes.
And that does pretty much imply that nothing larger than 100 is permitted.
Oh, yeah. Section C, the business zones, B1, 2, freestanding signs shall be permitted, maximum permitted. You'll not exceed 50 square feet for the number of lanes on the street, 3 or less, maximum permitted, shall not exceed 100 for four or more. So really, the size is designated by the street number of lanes.
Right.
If I remember, one of the dialogues at the zoning board appeal level many years ago was whether we're talking about turning lanes either. I think we're talking about through lanes.
Okay, so the turning lanes is not, is not included?
Is not included. I think that was the interpretation of the zoning board appeals many years ago. I assume that's the case, or no?
I haven't been including them, so I don't know if it did that or not.
Yeah, it does say exclusive of deceleration and or turn.
There you go, right there, yes.
And the rest were typos and that sort of thing. I guess we could go forward with that and just get it in the records that we wouldn't --
Yeah. No more from last time, something we caught. I can start out.
Do you want to just page three?
Yes. Page three, B.
I.
Three, I guess. Probably number, Roman numeral three.
I, I, I.
I, I, I. Real estate sign means a temporary sign advertising a sale, and then we crossed out rental or lease. We decided to add in real estate sign means a temporary sign advertising the sale or commercial lease of the premises or part of the premises on which the sign is displayed. What we did not want to limit is somebody being able to put a rental, real estate sign out on a commercial space that was, had space for a lease. So this allows for that. And it was, it does allow for it further back in our revisions as well. It just is a little contradictory with each other, so.
Wouldn't the rental sign be a commercial lease, though? How is that?
Commercial rent, oh, well, that's it. No.
See, I thought a real estate can only be a sale of a property. You can't sell a lease. And you can lease a space, you can't sell.
This is the definition of a temporary sign for a real estate sign. So it's a temporary sign advertising a sale or commercial lease. Distinguish from a --
Our current definition is for the sale, rental, or lease.
Right.
Okay? So rental goes back to a dwelling for, to somebody to live in, but commercial lease reflects office space.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we don't want to say that you can't have a sign saying you've got the third floor of your building available.
So that would be real estate sign means a temporary sign advertising a sale or commercial lease of the premises or part of the premises on which the sign is displayed.
Okay.
So that's on page three. Page five, which will be F3. We caught this one just going through where it says section 23, 03, 13, J. We believe that should be the letter I.
I, five.
I, five, correct.
It refers to that height requirement that we discussed earlier.
Actually, let's make sure the five is correct now.
Yeah. That would be on page 10, what we're referring to.
You mean it's through the graph that it refers to?
Yeah, it's a chart.
Yes.
Page six, under the letter I, this was from the last meeting, standards for signs in R3, B1, B2, B2D, B3. We forgot to put in EI.
All right.
And M's, just missed the EI in there. We should add that in. And I know a couple of people here have already talked to me about wanting to discuss item five, number three. I'll let them do that when we get back to it here, about the date, the 45-day period.
And if I remember, there's some of the other EI's were E1s as typos.
Yes, on page seven, letter C, so this would be I, 1, C. Educational, institutional building identification sign in a building containing one or more offices. Did you see where we struck out or residential housing units? All we're doing is going in and saying in a building containing one or more offices or departments, an individual building identification sign for each educational sign or institutional unit. So we're just relocating the word or because now there's just two items versus three. So again, just a typo.
Could you repeat that, Jan?
In a building containing one or more offices or departments.
What's it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Page seven, C.
Page seven.
It'd be I.
I, 1, C.
I have a question on that. In the EI, it's pretty broad range of activities. Why are you removing the possibility of housing units?
Are you talking about a that word we added in, Paul?
You're asking to delete it.
Well, we're deleting it because we're, oh.
Future dorm, building, coming.
University courtyard?
Well, university courtyard would be outside.
So you're asking why we're taking the residential?
Yes, correct.
That's not the EI zone.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
That is the, that's the educational, institutional use. That's not, that's not specific to the zone.
Why do we have an EI zone, though? I mean, I know why we have it, but like, why bother with the sign regulation in it, I guess is the better. I understand they have to write a letter and say why they can't abide by the sign one, but.
Maybe someday.
It might not be for this discussion.
Maybe someday it'll be as part that's not owned by the university. I don't know.
Actually, I guess I would leave it, then. It's my, if we're going to, you know, have like sign regulation.
Again, this one says education. What Paul's trying to say is on C, it says educational, institutional building. That does not mean EI zone. We're just calling out a type of use of building. It could be in any zone. It's just coincidence here that we're saying EI and then reading out the same.
Oh, okay, that's where I'm getting confused. All right, got it. I was with you on the same, approximately issue there. That makes more sense.
Okay. But you wanted to add something in there? You were changing or departments?
I'm just, we're just saying in a building containing one or more offices or departments. Oh, we're going to add the word or.
We're just moving the little letter or.
Okay.
Or the word or.
And the same in the last sentence as well, educational or institutional unit.
Because we struck out residential.
Because we struck out the or residential, yeah. And then further down in the letter H, on the same page, we've got E1, I should say EI.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on page eight. And there'll probably be a few more. I'll have to go through here and find. We caught this last time, for example, on K, 9, A, in an R3 zone, a 15-square-foot project or identification sign. Spell check, I put in feet and it didn't catch it, so. And that's in A, and in B as well, and it may be in there some more times. I'll have to go through and find them. Again, just a typo.
I guess going back to the earlier discussion about education, institutional, I wondered, do we need a business identification sign and an education, institutional building identification sign, or do we just have a building identification sign? Because we have a definition for, I guess, just identification sign.
Well, business identification sign is on page six, the first paragraph.
No, I, that's, I guess, I don't know. They're really going to be the same thing. And I don't know if we need to, can we just say a building identification sign and it covers both of those items?
I think we're looking at the use of the buildings, aren't we?
I just don't know if it changed. I mean, regardless of the use, whether it's a business or education, I mean, it's, they're basically defining an office thing. You know, do we need a laboratory identifica? I just don't, I feel like we might actually be able to pare down the code and just go along with me on that for a little bit. Because if you go to what a definition of identification sign is, it means a sign indicating the name and address of a building, development, public or semi-public facility, business, office, or industrial establishment. For business uses, such sign may also include the principal type of goods sold or services rendered. However, the listing of goods and services and sale items shall not be permitted. But then I just don't feel like these really differentiate themselves once you get to the standards for the signs.
Reading this now, it may have been at one time for mixed use between educational, institutional, and residential on the same building.
So it's almost like there's a mixed use identifying each unit within a building and then one identifying the whole building?
If you had classrooms on the first and second floor and then residential housing above it, maybe Bonley Hall, for example, was.
Wilson.
You know, that's almost as what this is really. Yeah, and Bonley's not in, it's in city. So I think that may be the intent, maybe in this situation. Maybe we're making a mistake taking residential housing units out.
That's right, you're right. And I think you want to keep it, or maybe we just say there's a building, a building identification sign and then there's a, you know, entity or something identification sign that's specific to each, you know. It's slightly different than a nameplate, which is just one professional, you know, it's sort of the next step up from nameplate, defining the business or department.
Right. I think what we ought to do there is put residential housing units back in. I think that is referring to combined residential classroom-type buildings.
Right.
So we'll just leave it at the way it was originally written.
Okay, so eliminate the strikeout.
Yeah.
And the.
I mean, what I, my understanding from a high university is they indeed may be looking at a model for, as they rebuild from the South Korean, that would have a commercial use and some housing.
Exactly.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you for going along with me on that.
But the question is, should it say and residential housing units instead of or? Because now it's the mixed use between the two. And/or.
Okay.
I mean, I guess the only thing we're saying, we don't, a utility building, does it need identified? I mean, really, does it?
It's not saying mixed use. It's saying in a building containing one or more offices, departments, or educational and institutional is referring to.
Yeah, exactly.
The concern with having that in there, I believe at the task force level, anybody's welcome to correct me if I'm wrong, but the concern was about that the or residential housing units would be interpreted as saying, well, if I've got a multi-unit residential, that's the use, and therefore that's going to permit another type of sign for rental units.
Like downtown or business.
Like downtown or anywhere else in town. It doesn't have to be mixed use according to that statement, as it's written today in code. So the concern at the task force was that it was, you know, most of the issues at the task force level focused on housing signage, not business signage.
So the.
Well, I wonder if you just get rid of the one or more, you just say any building containing education or institutional.
There's another section of code where we brought back in rental signage and property management signage, so we added a part to it and subtracted from there. Whether that was the right move, I don't know, but that's, that's how we got to that point where that was crossed out. Okay?
This is defining the type of use of the building specifically. I think we leave it alone.
Well, I think we described the use. I mean, I think, I don't think it matters if it's an office, an apartment, or, I mean, what it is. We just say that it's, if it's an educational, institutional building identification sign is a building containing an education or institutional use, and is allowed to sign per unit contained Because I wonder if we're limiting it by saying it's only offices or departments?
Well, that's why we're saying and, and/or residential housing units. It has to, it can't be strictly an educational, institutional building of residential housing. But technically, and when we get into that later on, if it ends up working in an R3, you can have an identification sign anyways up to 15 square feet, so. I guess what I'm trying to say with this is it was, we're looking at one that was, been in there for years, and I don't know if.
This one's passed the test.
Maybe it wasn't some intent.
Was that an issue with before, I do?
If there wasn't some intent for it to be in there this way as it is, so.
So you're recommending striking it out?
I recommend striking out all residential housing units and leaving it alone.
Okay.
Leaving it the way it was written. Because it's defining a type of building and what that building includes.
So keeping the language in there.
Yes.
When you say keeping the language in there, you mean keeping the strikeout, keeping the strike.
As is on this paper, except for the, moving the or about.
I'll be removing the strikeout. Just the wording.
See, I am not.
Keep the wording, hate the wording, exactly as it is. Not strike it out.
Today. Okay, so you're not change that section at all, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Good.
Got that clear.
And then we already did H as being EI. Now, not to confuse everyone there, we go right back again.
Okay. And it looks like on that H, I, 1, H also has the E1 and needs to be an EI.
Where are you at?
I, 1, H, just a little.
Page nine.
Right. Page 7, a little further down from the.
That's the one I was saying.
Oh, you did. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the letter. Apologies.
Then we discussed the feet to foot on letter K on page eight. And again, I'll go through and see if I can find any more of those, if there may be.
Yeah.
But I know I caught it twice right there. Paul already discussed on page 10 about the chart at the bottom there, sizes of sign in square feet. On page 11, down at the bottom of item three, at the last meeting, we crossed out, where it says temporary real estate freestanding or wall signs may be permitted advertising a sale, and then we crossed out rental or lease of the premises or part of, part of the premises on which the sign is displayed. And then we also took out the last part, such sign shall be removed within 14 days of the closing day of the sale of the property for occupancy by a tenant. We crossed out or occupancy by a tenant.
Okay, this is not reflected in the strikeouts?
It's not. It's not struck.
No, that, this was reflected in our last meeting that I had notes on. I'm covering both at the same time.
So you're deleting rental or lease?
Deleting rental or lease.
I'm not sure what.
Page 11, page 11.
I, 3.
Second line, where it says permitted advertising a sale, rental, or lease.
Okay, this reflected original definition. That was on page two or three.
This was, yes.
It's in the minutes from May 18, which.
Which we did get a copy of, okay.
It's mentioned there.
Minutes of May 18.
Page 1, the third line from the bottom. I believe that's it. Am I right?
L, 3. A, B, C, strike rental or lease, three times.
Yeah, okay. Do we need to bring that lease back in in relation to commercial lease?
Well, that's where, since we brought it up in the law, and temporary real estate freestanding or wall signs may be permitted advertising a sale or commercial lease.
I think so. That would coincide with what we did before, which would mean you'd want to keep the term tenant in there, very left end of it.
All right, so this rental lease, strike.
A, B, and C.
You'd either want to say by a tenant.
So we're substituting.
We're just taking out rental and adding or commercial lease. Yeah.
So we're substituting every lease for commercial lease in this section.
Yes, okay. A, B, and C, okay.
But then, which means that the strikeout for tenant, we want to either bring back in or change to lease or.
14 days of the sale of property.
Wait a minute.
Or occupancy by lease or. I think lease or sounds better.
I don't see it, didn't see.
So the last word was this tenant, so just put lease or.
Tenant would do the same thing?
Trying to somewhat avoid the confusion of housing rental versus commercing rental.
Or leasing.
But yes, it would be the same.
Describe a lease or.
Lease or leasing or?
Lease or.
Let's say commencement of lease.
That works.
commencement.
Maybe, maybe sale or commencement, sale of property or commencement of lease.
Yeah. No one wants to question us.
That is good, yeah.
Whether they're occupied or not.
So then do we have to add the word commercial in A?
I don't know. Commercial is merchant. Yeah, I guess anywhere you say lease is going to need a commercial in the foreword of it. One freestanding for sale for commercial lease, and we'll now. The other thing you could do is just add a definition at the beginning of this that says leases for commercial and rental is for.
Or we could just change the heading to commercial real estate signs.
Yeah.
That's the ones we're talking about here, a little bit, um, before I speak too soon, let me.
Talking about.
No, we can't say commercial because B does talk about residential, so. No, we can't say commercial, because B does talk about residential, so.
I don't see it in C, but the notes and the minutes reflect strike rental or lease.
In C.
Like, there were three, A, B, and C, but I don't see it in C.
Maybe it's just been a typo on that.
See, wouldn't it have been?
Oh, B became C.
So we good there?
I think so.
Read what it's going to say now. Number three, real estate signs, temporary real estate freestanding or wall signs may be permitted advertising a sale or commercial lease of the premises or part of the premises on which the sign is displayed. Elimination shall not be permitted, such signs shall be removed within.
And then, the next section being A, essentially in business and manufacturing zone other than downtown businesses district, one freestanding sign for sale or for commercial lease, available now built to suit, or any other sign shall be permitted per street, provided it does not exceed 32 square feet in single face and eight feet in height. So really, we're just putting commercial in front of lease. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yep.
Okay.
And you're really already saying that, because it says in business and manufacturing zones.
Yeah.
So.
For the sake of the audience, could you?
What the matter is suggesting that in section A is, we add for commercial lease instead of just for lease in the very first one. And then in B, temporary wall signs advertising for sale, for commercial lease available now, so same thing, we add it in there as well.
And that's for a specific zone, right?
Yeah. I think the problem, or the issue that we have is, I mean, you have the definite, you just keep repeating the definition of a real estate sign, and I feel like that's why we provide the definitions and the classifications by use types. Real estate sign means temporary sign advertising a sale or commercial lease of the premises or part of the premises on which the sign is displayed. So we're just being redundant, really, we could just say real estate signs are permitted, you know, or. So real estate signs, basically you'd say temporary real estate freestanding or wall signs are permitted.
Well, I think the reason we're doing this is there's lots of redundancy in here that jumps back and forth from section to section, and so we want to make sure they all blend together. And we went back earlier on page three, and we added commercial lease, when we said we, when we put in the definition, or temporary sign in number three, real estate sign means a temporary sign advertising a sale or commercial lease of the premises or premises or part of the premises on which the sign is displayed. So I understand what you're saying is redundancy, but pretty much, the code does that everywhere, we kind of reprints itself again, so, you know, that way we're staying consistent with what we've changed in pages previously.
Okay.
I just have to ask, where did the size come from, the 32 square feet and eight feet in height?
Just driving around, seeing that most people use a four by eight sheet of plywood, and stay, nail it up on two four-inch posts, and a four by eight sheet of plywood is 32 square feet. So that's the most common method that people are using.
And that's what, almost two foot higher than the real estate signs?
I'm sorry?
Almost two feet higher than the real estate signs?
Higher, yeah, this would be on the.
East State.
Currently, you're allowed 100 square feet. So this would be on the, if it's on East State Street, for example. They can lot on East State Street where somebody says build a suit, or whatever, you know, for lease now, or they can do a 100 square foot sign, because currently the code says that can, that temporary sign can meet the existing freestanding sign regulations. So this is to try to bring that a little bit under control.
Thank you.
East State, or Columbus Road can be 50 square feet, and this is reducing it down. And there's a perfect example right there, the property on Columbus Circle that's available has a four by eight sheet of plywood, up on two four by four posts, so. That's where the size come from.
Thank you.
And I see we took out the expiration date for temporary signs, except for real estate political signs, so it's here in each temporary one. That's been struck out, number five on page 12.
But that was all the corrections we had.
Okay. Oh, all the corrections, okay.
I believe there's two items that maybe people would like to speak to. I know Beverly was speaking to me about the 45 days of an OU academic school year, since that's changing around, just establishing a date, not worrying about the 45 days, if we just say October 15, or whatever. Mike, maybe let them speak to that, and the other one is the windows, signs on the.
Looking at next year's calendar where they switch to semesters, I did a backtrack on it, and I believe, see, I think I have notes in here, 45 days from opening of school. I understand the opening of school for next 2012 will be August 27, and 45 days after that would be October 10, I think, I'm trying to find my notes on that, which means that actually would be earlier than October 15.
We say, so October 15, we're supposed to give them six weeks, can we say just six weeks after the start of fall session, or?
The date we come across was, I know, was basically happened down by homecoming and Halloween.
Yeah.
So that, that's the, so if we say, second weekend in October, well, homecoming, you never know exactly when it's going to be, so, yeah.
Can you say homecoming? Ohio University, I mean, that's why we're doing this.
Make it less delightful and more delightful.
Exactly.
Prior to homecoming and Halloween, I don't know, week before, and that could, what if, what if homecoming is the first week of the season?
I don't know that I want Halloween in the code. Sorry.
That's why we came up with the date October.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, we'd stick with the weekend in October or something like that, rather than just the date.
If you want to change it to the 10, we can do that.
So are you talking about getting away from 45 days, or are you talking about and fixing it, or whichever?
Well, what's the 45-day stipulation start at?
Page six, section three or five.
Forty-five days in the OU sign must come down.
I thought I brought my academic calendar, but I didn't have it.
I mean, if we leave it the 45 days, we can calculate that based on what might shift with this whole shift to semesters.
Well, the problem is, if you do speak, no one's picking you up on a microphone, so. If you'd like to speak, we can, we can open it up now, I guess, it's always open.
I place a.
Yeah, either the table or the podium, if you'd like.
Probably the podium, I think is better.
Oh, yeah, podium, it'd be fine, if you don't mind.
I mean, I can, if I can speak for everyone. Am I supposed to sit up here?
Is the podium better, Ryan, which picks up better?
Table probably works a little better.
Okay, table, sorry.
I talked to John already about this, and I think we're pleased.
Introduce yourself.
We have reason.
Don't get to.
Gentlemen, we can't hear.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, everyone's landing on 132 North Lancaster Street, I was on the task force, so we're recording, last fall. First of all, question on date, Paul, did you find out for sure when classes start?
I don't have the calendar in front of me, but I was looking at it earlier today, and it's supposed to start August 27.
That's actually a little late for most semesters, they usually start around the middle of August.
This is what the calendar says, that's been on the, on the university website.
And it'll stay roughly that date then, presumably.
Okay, I don't know, I assume it'll shift depending on what weekend it is.
Yeah, shifts a year or two. Yeah, okay, so I think, I thought, I was agreeing with John, we could be a little flexible, I think, even on the 45 days, as long as we have an end point.
The end point.
So even if it gets to be 60 days, we were talking before the meeting, that wouldn't be so terrible, as long as we have an October 15 end point for getting the signs down. Now, that's my opinion, that may not be shared by everyone. I mean, that's just.
I mean, you know, you also got to keep in mind this is R1 only.
Yeah, and of course, council may come up with a, with a better suggestion, but I'd be willing to be a little flexible there, I guess. But even if you keep the original writing, the, you know, the syntax is bad there, and you'd want to correct that one way or another, so signs, sign must come down 45 days after an OU academic school year begins, if you want to keep the 45 days. The way it is is awkward and ungrammatical, actually. Sign must come down 45 days after an OU academic school year begins, or no later than October 15 of that academic year. So keep the 45 or don't keep it, but change the grammar.
Okay.
Okay. Can I comment on a couple of other points then, while I'm here?
Absolutely.
Go up one level to two, yeah, two under five. Sign must be next to front door or visible from in front of the house on the first door. We had talked about attaching the sign to the wall. Now, I noticed that, that attachment idea is not included, which implies that you could have a sign on the grass, right, as long as it's next to the front door or visible from in front of the house. I don't know how you want it, but we had, we had suggested attaching and then taking down with, you know, simple detachable screws or whatever. So I don't know how the attach was lost, or why. That's, that's a comment for you to think about. And.
Yeah, I guess what we're missing on this item is we're not identifying the structural type. We're describing the use type here, but not the structural type, whether it's a wall sign, a freestanding sign, or a.
But the committee had, the committee had insisted on attaching.
We could just simply say wall sign.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, we're just missing the structural type.
Jason, where are you again?
We're in, we're still in section five, but we're at number two.
Number two, okay.
Same, same block, that's the major block we worked on. And we were quite determined to remove yard signs and to put them on the wall of the building.
Well, it's sort of saying that too, but one combination rental property man and a sign per property may be placed on each building, provided against the.
Again, I don't mind a little redundancy though, because that's useful for the reader. I don't think it would hurt to say sign must, wall sign must be next to the front door. That would be fine with me. Okay, and then on four, I know, I know John doesn't want this, but I'd like to suggest again, that we have some kind of check system, sign may, or permit system maybe, sign may remain up or be placed after October 15, if a unit is not yet rented. I'd like to see the owner go to John's office and apply for a permit for that, otherwise it's up to John and his staff to go hunting around town to find the signs, and then seek out the owner to find out why that sign is up after October 15.
How much would that permit cost?
I don't know that it would have to cost anything more than your original.
Not cost anything.
I can't have a discussion.
No, I don't require a cost.
I'm sorry, I need to stop. Unfortunately, the way that this room is done, it's just mic'd per table or anything like that, everyone's free to go to a podium or to a table to talk. I don't even mind if people talk concurrently, I just, I have to have you mic, because it just sounds like an empty debate by one person.
Yeah, I agree.
Please continue.
Well, that's just my suggestion, it's something you can think about in the council, I'm sure we'll have it's view on it too, but I prefer more permits rather than fewer, just so that we don't have to hunt all over town and try to find out why a permit is up, why a sign is up after October 15, if it is. And then, down in XI11, in that same block, again, Pat Lane was supposed to check on this, I don't know if he ever did or not, but assuming that we cannot control interior window signs, that first clause just doesn't make any sense. You can't say interior window signs are not permissible if the federal or state law or whatever it is says they are. In other words, they would supersede our law, right? So I would just switch the interior and the exterior. Exterior window signs are not permissible, because we can control them, if there is a sign on the interior of the property, so.
You're not saying exterior window signs, you're saying exterior signs.
Exterior signs, right, you're right. Exterior signs are not permissible if there is a sign on the interior of the, of the property, and you should have it done there.
I'm not sure what the legality is that, but I know that we have some of the sections in the code here talking about interior signs, in particular flashing interior signs.
That's true.
Obstruction of windows visually or physically, because it just says obstruction, so therefore you could say a visual obstruction of a window, like a blind, actually, versus physical obstruction, plywood. So I'm not sure, we have control over interior windows, I think, in some level, I'm not sure what that is.
Then you could keep this, but clarify it. But, again, we were simply talking about the law, and we were assuming that the law allowed, and I think Mr. Pocos raised that point, that the law allows interior signs.
You're saying, you should say exterior signs are not permissible if there is a window sign on the interior of the property.
Interior of the property.
Fine.
And then, it would be up to you to check whether that interior sign is flash. Ben Lockman was the first one who pointed that out, and it just, it seems to me to make good sense. We didn't ever get a ruling, but I would just suggest that change.
Okay, so that implies that page four, section E4 is not legal, because it says, the safety consideration provisions of paragraph 230313 shall apply to interior signs placed in the window area or close proximity thereof for the purpose to attract attention to the premises.
And where are you? I would, I don't have the numbers on my.
Page four, okay. That would be section E, design standards.
You can just write it.
Number four.
You can assign numbers to them.
No, number three, I'm sorry, movement restrictions, number three, movement restrictions, page.
I see, I see.
And notice the section there says, this applies to interior signs.
Right.
Placed in the window area or proximity thereof for the purpose to attract attention to premises.
See, that, that does imply that interior signs of some kind, kinds are allowed.
I imagine it has to.
And so, we still should reverse that.
And then there's a section on page, two pages down on it, in terms of interior signs, section H59, which is property management signs, I think that's the section you're talking about.
But you're on four then, that four that you were back on, I'm sorry, E4, design standards?
Yes.
Just saying in relation to opening signs are not obstructive, fire escapes, stamped pipes, windows, or doors.
Yes, physical, visual. Can I drive with a sunshield on my windshield, I guess? It's probably illegal, but it's interior to my car, which has the same basis of a shelter.
Yeah, no, I don't think it matters where it's, I mean, even if it's in front of a window and offset from it, and it's blocking the opening. I'm sure muscle again has to do with exiting through that window.
Physical versus visual.
You just want to be sure that you're, you're not.
Who knows?
I mean, if we, if we can allow some interior window signs, then you should not say interior window signs are not permissible, that implies any and all grammatically, so just clarify that, we just do that switch, it seems to me that's simple enough. And then, if I could go back one second to one other point that somebody just mentioned a while back, if I can find it again, it's actually forward. It would be one, two more pages forward, under J. And I guess that's IJ, or is it LJ? GHI, IJ.
IJ.
Yeah.
Page eight.
Okay. It says identification signs for subdivisions may be attached to buildings. Do you want may or must, I just don't know.
May.
May, yeah, may was your intention, okay, that's fine with me, I just wasn't sure, because I don't recall. I just wasn't sure, because I only recall that we talked about that.
Because subdivisions are allowed to have a freestanding one attached to them, so.
Okay, that's fine. They were my concerns. I don't know if others have something else.
Thank you for your time.
I'm Joanne Prizry. I live at 40 Grover Street and I was on the task force also. The discussion of the date, the university date and the how many days in October. Well, for example, to backtrack a little bit, if this were in effect right now, across the street from me, they have been put two signs up last week, which would be before the opening of school. Now, you know, this is another thing. Can they put it up before that? But I think that you need to have, not too long a time, but I think you need to have a definite date, rather than 45 days or 30 days or something, because that's really hard. I stood, I went out and I looked and I thought, well, now, this would be, how many days would be 45 days? And then there's the question, do you count the weekends, you know, are they just business days? And that's always the thing. So, I think that a date, you can always, you can always change the date later. The law could be changed. If the university changes its mind about when it opens, you're gonna have to change it anyway, so. The 45 days to me is difficult, so. And I agree with everything that she said about all of this. The question of the sign, the interior signs, I believe that the one, the only thing you can't control is what's, what it says. I don't think you'd have control over what it says on an interior sign. And most of my experience, of course, has been political. There've been political signs and there've been people who've had signs up that most of the people don't agree with. They think it's inflammatory or something. And the law has, that was one of the reasons that they got into all this stuff, is that people can put in their window much what they wanna say. But you can control things like, do they flash? Do they, is it obstructed or you're nailing it up? So, I think that's something that the law director should look at to do, so.
Let me make this suggestion then. Since we're not suggesting that interior signs are not impermissible, we're saying if you have an exterior sign, you can't put an interior, if you have an interior sign, you can't put an exterior sign. We're only allowing one sign, so I don't even know why we need to differentiate between interior or exterior and just remove that either.
We need a difference.
Yeah, it was part, that was a lot of-
Why though? If there's only one sign and you're allowed to have it in either location.
Because there's been numerous attempts for people to put them inside, saying they don't count. So, this way, we're calling it out, saying, yes, it does.
It was a sticking point, a sticking point in the task force, that one, that it was hard to get anybody to agree, but some people did not agree. And this is one of the, was one, it was one of the hardest things we had to address. It should be the easiest, but it's- My only other thing, I agreed with her, but the only other thing that I would like to say is, ask, probably ask, a temporary sign, if you get a post hole digger and you dig a hole in your front yard and you put a huge, not a two by four, it's a great big thing like this, what do you call those?
Four by fours.
And all those things, that's not a temporary sign, to my way of thinking. Are they gonna come back in and drag that out again? I mean, this is, if they do, that'll be fine, but I question that, I really do. Having two of them across the street from me right now, they're brand new and they're lovely, but they're not gonna blow down, because I think they went down at least 10 feet to put them in there. And, and the other thing is, and I think this is, it doesn't go into it very much here, but these boxes and R1s where they have flyers that you can pick up, those have been illegal as far as I know all along, because it's advertising in an R1. But there's, they put them on there, so now they will say, I'm sure that the owner of that will say that they have 45 days to get all that down, but it was put up early and they're also illegally advertising.
Both of those issues are brought up in here and both of them would be illegal.
Yeah, good. And the only other thing is, and I was on a task force, my pilot didn't agree with everything they said, but I think these signs for R1, two feet square, are too big.
Okay.
I mean, I just, I think if you live in a place and you have all these signs, you'll, you need to look at them and they really are difficult as far as selling houses, renting houses in neighborhoods, and it's one of the things that turns things into slums very fast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just one quick comment. Alan McMillan emailed.
Again, a table on podium, sorry.
You'll have to switch the volume up and down on TV and then you do that.
This is just a quick, Alan McMillan of Cranberry Row emailed me and said he supports all this and offered to write letters of support if necessary. He simply couldn't be here today.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I can just say that the two square foot come twofold, one, we already allow nameplate signs of two square feet. And two, the signs you buy at Lowe's, the orange ones, say for around our two square feet, so that's where we come up with a number, so.
I'm June Sopranic and I live at 34 Grover Street. And I had, when, when we met as a committee, the two square feet sign was brought up and we couldn't agree on that. There was a significant disagreement with that. And I know Mr. Paskey himself said, just as he said today, "Well, we almost have to let them do it, because that's the size of sign that is sold here in the city." The size of sign that is sold in the commercial retail places is because that's what is bought. If, as in other cities, I have seen the smaller signs, and I have seen those smaller signs in this city, those will be the ones that the retail people get to sell, because they are going to be the legal signs. And so, I don't think we have to buckle to what is there already. We need to decide what is becoming our city and we need to pass laws there. And I apologize if I couldn't hear everything that was being said about the interior or exterior, but I do agree that it's very important to have the language in there. If there is an interior sign, just in case someone says we cannot control what somebody sticks in the window, we can control what's on the outside. So, if it is stated, if there is an interior for rent sign or sign, then there cannot be an exterior one. We have covered our bases and we have kept the signs to a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So, what is your plan, next steps here?
I, well, we didn't, last meeting we discussed not bringing even it up to a vote until Gary was gonna be present as well, since RJ had to acquiesce from the voting. So, that would be, so if you're, this is the next meeting, it sounds like we're gonna need some revisions that we discussed, just to make this a lot clearer before even proceeding with the vote.
Yeah, we can make the changes.
And it looks like it needs probably one more painful look-through by the planning commission and other members of the city departments, if interested. So, I don't see us, I mean, it could come up as early as a vote next week, but I gotta find it's gonna slip a little past that. I think my biggest concern is, I understand redundancy is important, but I think there's still some things we can do to make it a little bit clearer. And I think we just have to be very clear in what it is we're describing here on, you know, or miss, by exact, you know, rather than just say the structural type, rather than trying to define it again over the signs. So, I think we're close, I just feel, feel like we gotta do one more revision before the vote.
Most of it, I look at as typos and part of the thing is just correcting some of the language.
Yeah.
In terms of redundancy, I don't worry about the redundancy so much. I worry about if we start cutting off pieces, we make that out of something critical, that we'll find out at a later date that we need.
My only concern with redundancy is saying it right in one place and then meaning that same way we had said it right here, but then putting something, some other angle into it that leaves a place that it's open to, you know, legal. Well, what you actually meant was this, well, no, we meant that, but. So, that's why my only concern with redundancy is just like, let's get it right in this one spot and then we'll just keep using that word, so. And I mean, it might be just, there were a lot of places where we had the rent or commercial use. It probably can be just captured at each item. One thing I did just see here, and I'll bring it up now, but we can go at another time, is I think in a classification by structural type, we define the classification signs, it's page three if you have the pages, otherwise it'd be section or part D, number two. We define identification sign under structural type and that should be stricken, 'cause that's describing a use. And we haven't defined the same definition under the use.
Where are you at?
I'm all the way back on three.
Under definitions, classification by structural types. It'd be section 03.
Part D.
D2C, two-
Yeah, 2C.
D2C.
D2C.
Page three. You're talking about identification is actually a use rather than a class structure, a structure.
Yeah.
Notice that should be over, actually over in-
And we have it over there in identification sign under permit signs or under the use type.
It's almost identical, isn't it?
It is, yes. Identification sign is a permit type of use sign, whereas identification sign is not any type of structural type. So, we just need to take that out. It may be in there, I don't know. I kept looking at that and trying to figure out what they would mean by a structural-
Identification sign.
Exactly. Well, so, wall type, freestanding or-
Hmm.
So, I guess maybe take another look at that and see if there was something I missed.
I think it's in there specifically as a structural type.
But I just, what would-
You have a canopy projecting walls, it'd be the three type of a building. A freestanding is pretty well defined as one on maybe on a post or standing up. Identification sign would basically be a ground sign or pointing to a subdivision or whatever, so that, and I think that's why they put the indentations around it. They really maybe couldn't come up with a proper name for it back when they did this. I think it was a classification, maybe ground sign is what we call it. That that's, in essence, what it is, the difference here.
Yeah, but freestanding sounds grounds.
Okay.
Right.
I don't know. I mean, there may be, but, you know, very well could've just been a mistake.
Okay, the other section I see for identification signs is on page six.
Okay.
This is actually, has to do with R1s and R2s. It'd be H3, I guess, identification sign.
Yeah.
So, is that something that we need to be looking at in terms of how that relates to this use and the definite structure?
I'm not finding an H3.
Oh, okay, look at page six. On to page six. Identification sign, we struck out apartment building complex. One identification, freestanding sign, not exceeding 15 square feet on a single phase area of six feet in height indicating the name of a public facility or subdivision. Such signs shall meet the setback requirement of 25 feet. So, that's a structure there, or, no, that's a use again, isn't it?
Right. Because it's one identification, freestanding sign. And there's also identification, we'll just take another look at that. I don't think we're gonna solve this right now, but.
Now, we have a business identification sign at the bottom, same page six.
I'd like to see a matrix of all these signs. I'll put that forward to- I know we're just looking at the additions with the real estate and how that impacts the existing sign regulations, but while we're, you know, since we are doing a pretty thorough additions and are striking things, I just figure this is the opportunity we should take to correct other things in the sign ordinance. Well, I would say one more, but again, everyone's free to speak as much as they want. I just have to come to the table or podium.
Do I have to come up?
Yes.
John, I'm sure it's in here. I just can't find it. We had specified that a rental sign have, if not the name of the company, at least a contact phone number and/or-
I think it does.
Website, and it's, I just can't find it now today, but we wanted to be sure that people knew who the contact-
Content of project or identification sign would be limited to address, project name, phone number, and web address for current electronic media outlets, still meeting item four requirements. Item four goes back, the signs may not be neon, metallic, reflected, eliminated, moving, or flashing.
It shall be limited to, does not specify what is required.
How about page two? The only place we said it was one required was on the B2D on the buildings uptown.
Oh, I thought we wanted it.
I think most of the landlords will put a phone number or something.
Okay, how about page two in definition, use types? Section there is number seven, Roman numer seven. Property management sign means a sign identifying the person, business, responsible for that specific rental property.
Sign identifying, yeah, property management, but also how about rentals that are not under a property management company?
Those private owners.
Private owners. We were very clear in our task force that we wanted identification to be required, not just allowed or-
So, you anticipate somebody with a rental sign that has nothing on it except saying for rent?
All right. There has to be, there has to be a phone number and/or website and preferably even the name. Didn't we say we liked up the name of either a person or a company? You were on the committee.
Suppose it's the data and the-
I can just speak to that, Michelle Pappy. I think there was a lot of discussion about that, but we, there was some real concern with every single rental having a sign on it. Some rentals are in neighborhoods that are, you know, there's one rental per 20 houses or whatever. And I think there was a real concern with identifying every single rental, which kinda goes back to one of our other members who mentioned the idea of having signage, period, you know? So, I think that there was a compromise that was struck between whether that really needed to be allowed, yes, but not-
Required.
Required. We did have several discussions around that.
Set your memory to.
That's mine.
Okay. Yeah, I just wasn't sure and I was looking for it. Okay.
So, is the intent to have the revisions maybe at the next meeting and then schedule perhaps the vote for the fall, the first meeting in October?
That would be the, it sounds like a good track, but this is the sign ordinance regulations we've been talking about. So, is that something that's approachable? I mean, I guess, I wouldn't see any problem with you making, John, the revisions that were just discussed today, however, if there's further revisions, then yes, it probably might take longer than the two weeks we have till the next meeting.
That's up to you guys.
I just, Mr. Bittner, there's been a lot of effort and a lot of people working on this, and I understand all the Ts and need to be crossed and the Is dotted and all that, but I think we need to move, we just need to keep pushing it forward.
Absolutely.
If you're saying that, then I'm in agreement, but I don't, I mean, I understand someone wasn't here to vote today and you need everyone here and everything needs to be in place. And I think there was a good shot at it today, but we need to keep on this process. There have been a lot of signage groups over the years meeting, you know, so I-
No, I mean, that is definitely a goal of our commission, is to get this thing into some sort of condition that we can send over to city council for, you know, so that we can make our recommendation.
Would it be good to set a date on it?
Uh, you know, I mean, things change. We can't really set a voting date. I mean, really, someone has to bring it up to a vote and someone has to second it, so to speak. I mean, we'll, again, it will always appear on the agenda. We won't just sort of surprise that- that anyone, but that we're going to have the discussion of the sign ordinance regulations. You know, again, it's up to city council to pass it, we have had discussion here on the commission that, you know, basically the law is always revised, if there is any legal condition that may be holding the, the commission back, we know we can always go back and revise the law at the time, so. Go ahead.
Again, it's June Sefranik. I would like to make sure there's a clarification here, the signs that say it's rental all year long, some renter, and I didn't write down the number, has gotten very clever and he's, he has a beautiful little house number sign, and then on, on that it says so-and-so rentals and a phone number, and so that is a permanent thing on the house, and that seems out of line with, with what we're talking about. Now, on the other hand, there are some number signs that have the shape of the logo of the rental company that's, or the shape that's used often, and it's just the house number. And, and I find that, you know, well, okay, you got that one, but having the name and number and it plastered there that it's a rental company is just not, just not suitable for our ones.
You're talking about a nameplate sign by definition, right?
Nameplate, the permanent number plate.
That can be a property management sign.
It may indeed be.
Just be careful when you do it, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's hard to, without seeing, you know, a photograph or an image to figure out what's going on, but. All right, any further discussion?
So, the intent is to tweak this a little bit and bring it up next?
Yes.
In October, September 21st?
September 21st, once we have one other voting member present.
Okay, and the intent also is to have this pretty much corrected as soon as possible and put on the website?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Let's say Wednesday, at the latest, you'd basically wait for today to get it there. That would give, I, I don't want to put it up there and then, oh, we got another discovery, let's do this correction, just so we have a little flexibility there, we can get most of the changes, and then that one that goes up next Wednesday is the one that will be perhaps voting on at the next meeting.
And the process still requires, of course, council to have a public hearing on this too?
Yes.
And approve it.
Yes.
Three readings.
Three readings, yes.
I assume so.
Okay.
Committee as well.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I, before the motion, table discussion till the next meeting.
Okay.
All right.
I'll listen back.
Thank you. All those in favor of tabling discussion?
All right.
If there's no opposition, we'll move on to, well, first, any other communication?
No.
Okay. Reports from C Planner and Director of Development and Code Enforcement.
You go first. Sure. One update that's, maybe I should have brought up as communication, but I did have a telephone conversation with Mr. Mark Spezza after the last planning commission meeting. He verbally told me that he is, he is tabling his request for annexation. He has not given the city anything in writing, but at this point, there's nothing relating to that zoning issue that the planning commission needs to bring forward.
Okay.
It's sitting with council right now, I believe it has to sit for 60 days and somewhere in that timeframe with city council and the clerk's office. After 60 days, city council has 120 days with which to vote to determine it, if council doesn't do anything after 120 days, then it's essentially not being acted on anyway, so.
I believe there's going to be a planning development committee meeting next week. I don't know if this will be on the agenda or not, but that would be, I think the 60 days have passed for council at this point.
I don't recall.
Okay, I think, I think they've.
It's pretty close.
Yeah, so they've sat on it, I think for about 60 days, so at this point, they can act on it or not. I think we have to, as a planning commission, have to put a zoning designation in place. I think at one time they were discussing trying to bring the other 30 acres in, I don't know where that is at this point, it sounds like everything stalled.
That's my impression, yeah.
But do we need, require him to have a letter? I imagine we should request something from him in writing.
I can try.
Okay.
I can try. I have no authority to force anybody to write me a letter, though.
I know.
The, I am working on the wireless communications, or wireless telecommunications ordinance. I've got, plugging through a draft right now, I do anticipate having that draft to the planning commissioners at the next meeting.
Okay.
The, I am also working with the Arts Parks and Recreation Director and Board to put together an Arts Parks and Recreation Plan. We're getting some surveys put together that I'll, once the board has reviewed them at their next meeting in two weeks, that'll be out for public consumption online, and we'll also be arranging some sort of stakeholder interview process before we get into public The county commissioners have, it's my understanding that the county commissioners have provided funding to get the hazard mitigation plan completed, I think at the last meeting I discussed, a lot of that was in limbo. It's my understanding that they are going to make sure that that gets funded and completed by the end of 2011, so we're basically on pace with that. And as far as I know, we don't, we have no cases for the next meeting.
By funding that, are they asking for assistance from your office, or are they just getting an independent?
There was an intern, a paid intern who was working with Bob Eichenberg on it, she is now working on a project with the health department, but I believe they have offered that funding to her.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not 100% sure on that, that's my assumption.
Right.
They're not asking for the city to take it over.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're not affecting this body, this commission, but Paul Ogg is also working on a census for the award designation for councils?
Yes, yeah. By the end of this year, the census awards do have to be evaluated, and a decision has to be made if they need to be moved around to make sure that each award is balanced. I'm working on that with the point of his school, with Matt Trainer, their GIS specialist.
I don't know if it's been released publicly, that our planner Paul Ogg received an award from the Ohio Division of Flood Plane Management, ODNR, for innovative innovation in flood plane management, it's even longer than that.
Ohio Flood Plane Managers Association. The city received the award, not, I, I accepted it on behalf of the city. There was a lot of people who put in work to get that award. Elaine Getz was major, a major mover on that. Debbie Phillips also was the major push to get the Title 25 updated prior to her leaving city council. The stormwater management ordinance is also part of that, so there's a lot of people who should be recognized. I do, I think we did talk about that at the last meeting, but, thank you.
Sure.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. John?
Shade Tree meeting, if I can speak, Shade Tree meeting tomorrow evening at 7:00, right here. The only case on the agenda is the Hickory Street PUD will be coming up tomorrow evening. And then Tuesday evening next week is VZA meeting, we have three cases on the agenda right now. One of them is at 762, I think is the number, West Union Street, it's where the Bobcat Equipment Rental Place is at now. They're coming back in for requests for residential on the first floor and a V3 in the back of the building, before they came in for residential, the front and the rear, and that was denied. So now they're just coming in with the rear of the building for residential. Also, a various request for a fence at East State Street on, I'm trying to remember the address, near Morris Avenue, for the Chandler residents. And then the third one is a utility station, this is a conditional use that is permissible through, with conditions through the VZA, for a, again, utility station for Horizon on Schaefer there, at the little spur, Old River Spur, where Loughlin is now coming, where he, I think many of you know where he's got the motorcycle training, he's right back in there on that asphalt part there, so. They have submitted for, for that, I guess it's supposed to be a hub for Athens area, so. And that is the three cases right now.
So they need a conditional use permit for that, do they have a size and footprint on that?
Yeah, yeah, they've submitted state approved drawings and everything, it's eight by 20, I believe is the size of the structure, it's a concrete pre-slab, a pre-cast concrete structure that's just set in place, and it has all their mechanicals inside of it, and everything's underground, it comes up from underneath.
How close is it to Schaefer Street?
They, well, the fence line that you know right there is actually out into the right of way, so they will be.
The one with the poison ivy on it?
No, that's the one.
That's the viaduct side.
Viaduct side.
Well, the shape has a little bit of it.
But the, about eight foot back from the setback of the houses, if you were to draw and imagine any line through there, so.
The only reason why I ask is I notice that does get some water there once in a while, it doesn't flood, it's not a flood zone.
Looked that up.
But there's a drainage issue there of some kind.
Right, and they are going to have it up on one or two courses of block above the grade as well, so when they're building and retaining, well, it's almost going to be, if you saw where they were cutting out that brush, on the, kind of on the south side of their hillside in that little property, that's, it's going to be kind of cutting back into that hill a little bit, so very little of it will actually be sitting on the blacktop.
Okay. Just wondering.
On the Shade Tree Commission, I'm just reviewing the minutes, and I was not here at the August 17th meeting, but when Integrated Services, it says number seven, Shade Tree, September Agenda for Clarification.
Yeah, I, I did send the stuff over to David Ingram and asked for clarification, and he said they made a final resolution on everything at the, at a meeting, and I can't remember the date, and he sent it over to me, and all they're asking for is that a site plan be drawn up with some revisions added, and then just brought into my office and doesn't need to go back through them.
Okay.
I will notify RVC, the architects to do so, and I just got word of that day before yesterday or whatever, so, my apologies, I forgot that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right, any questions? Okay, I'm opportunistic to speak, but I'm not going on the agenda, apparently the only discussion were items on the agenda today, announcements and other business. First off, our next meeting is scheduled, I've mentioned it a couple times at this meeting, that is on September 21st here at noon. Any other announcements?
That I can think of.
Okay, again, congratulations to, go out to Paul Ogg for spearheading the city's effort and to the rest of the parties on the new flood plane management protocol. If there's no other announcements or business, this meeting is now adjourned.